Call the meeting to order. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in Jerusalem, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Ken.
Here.
Lori.
Here.
Point of order. One of the things I just discovered Supervisor is there's a new modification to the public Michigan Open Meetings Act. I'll read what it says. It says new public act 528 of 2012 which took effect immediately December 31st 2012 amended the open meetings act requirements for special meeting notices MCL 15.265. The notice of a special meeting or rescheduled regular meeting must be posted at least 18 hours prior to the meeting and now it must be visible to the public for the full time that is posted. Also if the township has a website that includes monthly or frequent updates of public meeting agendas or minutes, the notice must be posted either on the homepage or on a separate webpage dedicated to public notices for special meetings and accessible via a prominent and conspicuous link on the website's homepage that clearly prescribed its purpose for public notification of those meetings. I just came from the Green City Public Library. Our township website is updated regularly on the homepage and it has all the meetings scheduled for 2013. The public meeting, the special meeting we're having right now was not ever put on there which means technically...
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We weren't aware of it. If you want to give me a copy of that?
Sure you go.
I'll be happy to. Keep it. Thank you.
Yep.
Wasn't aware of that. When did you copy this?
I just came from the library.
Oh, just from the library?
I only found out about everything.
You just found out about today too?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention so we can do that in the future. Oh, here you can keep this though. I don't need that.
Technically that makes this meeting illegal.
It doesn't make it illegal. Okay. Anybody else?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Open session? Anyone?
We got a vote on that.
Oh. All in favor?
I.
And I oppose.
I.
You're opposed to the agenda?
Correct.
Why?
I just, I don't think that it should be taking place right now.
Okay.
I mean, I also feel I noticed that also on the agenda is, you know, you have the lawn care bid which was publicly advertised on the website but you have our website bid which was not publicly advertised on the, on the website.
Okay. We'll note that. I'd like to adjust the board confrontation that we just had with Michael wanting to sit in the seat. At the last board meeting we said, it was stated during the board meeting that we would address it with the lawyers and the lawyer would get back with us. Lawyer did not get back with us. Michael was trying to force himself to sit here which we addressed it to how we were going to handle it but you want to handle it unknown instead of how we had decided to do it.
We've never had an official seating arrangement other than when...
That's not, but the case is that you wanted to sit here. You brought a recommendation in from the doctor. I said we would see what the lawyer said, if that's, you know, a prescription or not. So...
I just think it's incredibly insulting that Mr. Ken Chartier will not swap seats for the safety of a, the medical safety of another person.
That's your opinion. That's your opinion. We haven't got a prescription.
Well, Mr. Ken Chartier is entitled to his opinion about the safety of others.
How is that safety? How is that safety? Are you going to fall on your chair?
I'm not a doctor.
She's not a doctor. I'm not a doctor. How is she going to help you with seizure?
Oh, if I saw a, look, I, I previously had this seat but when I heard that another board member had a medical need, I honored it like a gentleman.
That's so she can hear me, Michael. What, what am I going to do for you? What am I supposed to do for you during the board meeting if you have a seizure?
Well, I've heard...
Are you going to, should I stare at you? Because according to your seizures, they're very small and in and out. Your mom sat in the audience and didn't even say nothing when you were having one.
She actually said something to the camera person if you could see that.
Why would she not say it to us?
Why would you say, "Something's wrong with Michael."
Mom, I was looking at the meeting and looking at you like this while you were having the meeting.
Well, if you want to sit out here so we can see you, then sit out there so we can see you.
I'm not a trained professional.
If you want us to hold you in and babysit you, then go sit out there where we can see you. I never look down the table. Ken does not look down the table. Kelly does look down the table.
I look down the table when you're talking.
Audience can see you. We can't.
I don't look at somebody, I look at them when they're speaking.
That's the whole point, I believe, you know, one of the reasons why the doctor wants me in an interior position because then you, while looking at Kelly, you would be more likely to see.
When do I look at Kelly? I looked at you because you did not answer me. That's the only reason I noticed you.
And the whole point is if the doctor here has a prescription, then that's fine. Anyway. Any unfinished business? No one?
Did you approve the open session?
Yeah. Oh, no way. I sit there. I would like to.
I, I would like to say something for you.
Michael, you, you said, we've, I think we've all gone on this one 10 minutes.
I didn't, I never had an official open session. That was something you started.
Go on, Michael.
Thank you. The, the way that the previous four board members had the previous meeting down the line here, from the moment that meeting started, Mrs. Kelly Faselli-Lisco...
I just go by Kelly Lisco. I don't, I don't even name my name.
Okay.
My name's Kelly Lisco.
Well, the, I was told from the moment that meeting started, "Michael, speak at board comments." We never got to board comments and the reason for that is because for the second meeting in a row, a board member, this time it was Ken Chartier, previously it was Clerk Lori Russellburg, made a motion for adjournment while I was speaking and for the second meeting in a row, Kelly Lisco seconded the motion. This time, all four board members actually voted yes on it. I thought that was tremendously insulting. That violates public speaking rights. That's even worse than what that previous staff of Tom Raymond ever did, so...
Okay, I find the things that you put on your Facebook and your YouTube about this board is incredibly insulting. I think the way that you treat us is incredibly insulting. I think that you just look for ways to argue with us. You had that doctor's note on Friday, April 5th. You could have easily brought that in here Monday morning and addressed it with us and said, "This is the spirit of this." Instead, you chose to wait until the whole meeting.
So your camera was on.
So your camera was on. Instead of addressing it to us as a fellow board member, as a team player, but you're not a team player. All you want to do is cause controversy so that people look at your websites. That's all you want to do. You never come to us about anything individually. You always wait until the day of the board meeting. You never discuss anything with us. It's on the agenda. You have a whole week to discuss it. No, you wait until the night of the board meeting and you are always argumentative and never supportive. You never call during that week and say, "Hey, I have a question about this. I have a question about this." You wait until the board meeting so that you can, oh, make sure it's on your team and make sure you just cause your controversy. You never call any of us to address anything. You wait and be very argumentative and you're very argumentative and very negative about everything. You're not positive about nothing to do with this township. You said you're here to help the township. You've not done one thing positive to help it. Not one thing. You've not conducted, you haven't been polite, courteous, nice to your fellow board members and you've not done anything positive. You've not commented with us for suggestions. All you've done is sit and wait around and want to cause pure pandemonium on everything that's on the agenda.
All right.
That's mine. And now we're done.
No, that's incorrect.
We're done. It's been long.
Point of order. Point of order.
We do not do protocols.
No, no. No. The Michigan Public Open Meetings Act specifically says...
And you continually interrupt me and I'm going to start calling you out every time you interrupt me. I'm going to ask you to stop. And then I'm going to do a motion to censor because I'm going to document how many times you interrupt me when it's time to move on. It's time to move on. I'm saying it's time to move on. It's time to move on. Open law.
Supervisor, the bottom line is the Michigan Public...
We're not going to move on today. We're going to just open on today?
Yes.
Okay.
No, we'll open them and then...
I already did the time so...
Somebody will tell me who it's from and tell me how much they're getting for and I'll mark, I'll write everything down then we'll make everybody have a copy so they can look through it and we'll set a date for when we make the decision.
Please start reading on the shirt.
How many calls were received Supervisor?
Four. One, two, three, four.
Okay, who's the first one?
First one is from Tim's Lawn. So with regards of the Township Hall, $39 per cut.
$39 per cut?
Yes.
That's all he says? Nothing like the, the park or the...
Well, it's...
They're all separated.
Okay. And then the park is $198 per cut.
$198?
The bike pit is $34.
Okay.
And the sewer pump is $59.
Is that for all five or just...
Yes. They do $11.80 each.
Okay. So $59 for the...
And he didn't put the cemetery on here but I don't think, I think when he picked it up, we didn't realize that the cemetery wasn't on this one.
Okay. My understanding, the cemetery is the worst of all of them.
Right. J and D Lawn Service?
Are those just letters?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. $35 per cut for the Township Hall.
$35.
Do you think being the, when, it's 23?
Two, four.
One, two, three. Because being that the one doesn't, he has the cemetery on it, do we want to wait and, and before we read out the cemetery and call him to see what he would bid on the cemetery? Being that we're just looking at these right now?
Yeah, we could just go...
One, two have it and one don't or one doesn't mention it?
That's just the cemetery.
Oh, this is just the cemetery? Okay. Yeah. So that way we can clarify.
Was that for the same, the person who didn't do the cemetery?
I don't know.
I don't know. It's Jeff Plack.
Oh, that would be him. Okay, so who did it?
Tim's Lawn Care.
Okay, Tim's Lawn Care didn't put the cemetery. So we won't read out what the other people say for the cemetery?
We don't need to be reviewed and clarified anyway.
Right, exactly.
Just make sure that it's all included.
Okay, so actually we only have three, Michael. Because this one was the same. One, two, three.
Okay, so who's out there?
Okay, well, let me finish with J and D. Township Park, $350 per cut. The bike pit, $35 per cut. And for the sewer pump stations, $40. And so this is $350.
And then he didn't do cemetery either?
He did do cemetery but, well, I guess...
Oh, you're not going to say it?
Right. But I have it here. So I'll just attach it. That's where we got the fourth because he put it in a different envelope.
Okay.
And then who's?
Then this is Fred Martin All Seasons.
Fred Martin All Seasons. Township Hall, $30 per cut. Township Park, $224 per cut. The bike pit, $20 per cut, per cut season. And the pump stations, $25. Per cut, but he has total $299.
So for all five pump stations?
The Smith Cemetery.
Right, and he does have the cemetery down too but I want to wait to call J and U for his $811.
So, I'm sorry, the last one, the two something figure, was that for all the pumping stations?
Per cut. That's what I'm reading.
Well, this guy, $11.80 each.
Right, $59. I'm wondering, yeah, so I don't know.
I think his total is probably going to be $12, $25.
Oh, wait, I thought you, that's his total for, for the, okay. I'm sorry, so the sewer pump stations would be $25 per cut.
For all?
For all five or each?
For all five.
Okay.
I think he, he would just took the total of what, swastika was per cut. And this goes to... And, oh, let me make sure we all, they all included copies of their insurance as well.
Well, that's awesome.
So basically, Michael, did you mind looking at these?
Sure. Thank you guys for including me.
Well, we tried to when you're nice to us. You know, I...
I'm glad you're always trying.
I know that we just clarify each of the bids prior to making a decision on it.
Well, we can make copies of each of the bids so we can look them over and make sure we're combining or comparing apples to apples and then make the decision at the next board meeting. That would be, that would be my motion to...
Make sure that you...
Okay. To get copies of the bids for each board member and look, look it over and make a decision at the next board meeting. That's my motion.
All right. I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Oppose? Anyone here?
You just want me to stack these, Madam Chair?
Sure. Did you get this?
Yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
With this team, big time, it's Lori. Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm not ready.
I know. Okay. Okay. New business, item number two, approved website bid.
How many bids are there?
Well, there is this, this was the one that came in with the sealed bid and then this was the meeting I invited to, you took show, I mean, they invited you to on Monday but you didn't show up. So I don't know.
Yeah, I had sent an email to Lori but I had not heard a response, you know, saying that I believe that, and I also mentioned this, Kelly on the telephone, we need to, I actually received advice from several people, it would be best to simply rebid the, the entire thing, this time in a larger newspaper such as the Times Herald so that we do, we do receive the three bids needed to make sure that we have a fair estimate of quality and pricing.
Are we going to do this with everything? I mean, it, I see a pattern of whenever Mr. Zorn doesn't like the answer, he wants to redo it. For instance, requesting that we re-vote on the security.
Definitely. That one...
That one passed. It's passed. It's done. It's like saying, "I don't like President Obama, let's redo the election."
All right. I'd like to respond. The, in the Yellow Pages, there are 24 local companies listed. However, the company that ended up winning that contract was from East Point and I actually have some sign-in sheets that they're attending a group associated with Kelly's campaign manager. That's very disturbing to me when someone from East Point, not even listed in the Yellow Pages, gets that job. That brings back memories of that previous board and the insider dealings. So I, definitely I have a problem with that one being one with only one bid turned out. Should have been sent out again.
So is that what you're accusing me of? Inside dealing?
I didn't say that.
I just, well, when you, see now you're mentioning the previous board insider dealing along with something that I took the time out. You didn't help. You didn't bring up one thing. You knew that we were looking for, for web cameras and you didn't bring one single person. Again, the same with the website. You didn't bring one single person. In the five months that you've been in office and we've talked about updating the website, you have not brought one single proposer or one single company...
That, that's right. These two were publicly advertised. That one wasn't.
So you, you believe that everything should be publicly advertised?
Definitely.
Our porta potties, our pest spray, our security, everything should be publicly advertised when we're going to do the contract?
When you're looking for a one-time purchase such as a website or a lawn contract that's one of the last many years or a security system?
Porta potties are one time? Then you got a bid about the next year, a bid about the next year, or are you just saying to extend the contract?
No.
So which do you do?
Well, obviously something like that has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis but a security system for $5,000, a website for up to $5,000, lawn care for $1,000.
Okay, so wait, but here's my question. We didn't put that out, the camera out for bid, only one person. Well, after the first presentation, gentleman failed, then this gentleman shows up, does the presentation, does the estimate, everything. But that's only one person, so you want to put that out for bid, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now we put this out for bid and we get one response. So now, now you want to rebid it again. Then why when we said we were putting this out for bid, didn't you say, "Hey, where are we putting out for bid for?" I have, let's put it out here, let's take a vote on that. Now you want to change it again.
All right, to respond to your question. As far as the website goes, it was publicly advertised and it did receive one response from the...
So I don't think that's a fair, oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I'm going to...
It, it did receive one response from the small voice newspaper locally. However, the, and, and the bids here for the lawn, was it three or four you said officially? It had four, but I have three coming.
It was three. Right, because it was the same person.
Okay, and so, so that one actually did get a little bit more impressive results because there's more lawn companies in the area. As far as the security systems, that one actually got zero because that company didn't see it in the local press. There are obviously...
If we're going to just have discussion, I need to be excused because I'm being corrupt.
Oh, okay. So do we want to approve this or not? The website? I'm sorry.
Well, we can approve Mr. Chartier leaving. We have an excuse now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So just for clarification, it's okay with the lawn care to be advertised in the voice and for us to accept that, those, but not to accept this one that was, that was advertised in the same newspaper?
I received instruction from...
I'm asking you. I'm not asking you.
Okay, well...
I want to know your opinion. Every time you always say, "This person told me, this person told me, this person." You're, you're elected on what you think, not, but yeah, you keep saying, "Well, this person told me, this person told me," instead of, "This is what I think."
I, I received guidance from many people because I value their opinions. I listen to the people. The, the fact is, in my opinion, at this point in time, if you want to give it a first try of locally on a, such as the voice, to guarantee that the local companies get the job, definitely, always do that. However, if you do not meet the minimum criteria of three...
Do we have a minimum criteria?
No.
That's just a, well, not officially, but you need to set three to set a precedent.
Well, then maybe you should start working on our bidding policy because right now our bidding policy doesn't have that.
The, for example, there was a...
So it's a clarification that if only one person bids and you have a three minimum, we go without the service.
You always want to get it...
Or we, we keep spinning our wheels and spending money.
Right, but that's something we need to work on the bidding policy because now we're getting, that's not...
We're waiting on this because I do need to leave soon also.
Right, that's not, right.
This, this meeting should end within 15 minutes.
Well, I just wanted to...
Well, this is a relative huge problem.
Try to work it out with Mr. Zorn, so...
I mean, Lori, this, this, well, my...
Michael, we keep wasting our time.
Okay, so I guess we need to make a motion to approve the website bid.
So we're going to go with revise?
We need to make a motion to revise.
If you'd like, well, see, the way, Madam Supervisor, the, or Madam Chair, the way that Clerk Lori Russellburg had previously mentioned in the past, specifically saying a special meeting according to the policies in place only allow items to be dealt with as they are specifically mentioned. If you'd like, I'd be happy to make a motion to rebid the contract if that is allowed according to the policies.
Are we talking about the website?
Yes. Yes, the, the lawn service is definitely acceptable. We've got the minimum three bids.
But if we go out for bid again, then we get one response.
Then, that's what I'm saying. You can still keep it...
Maybe we have to do that.
You can still keep it locally in the Bluewater area by going to a larger market such as the Times Herald.
Times Herald is way more expensive to run ads in than the voice. The voice goes to every household in this neighborhood, in this area. I do not get the Times Herald. I don't know of anyone that gets the Times Herald.
How, do you, what do you...
Well, I guess we...
Hold on, this is important. The, Madam Chair, may I please ask if, if anyone on the board knows how much, something like that would cost to put in the Times Herald?
No, do you?
No, but, but I was...
Or do you know, I'm sorry.
I was going to volunteer to pay for it myself.
What is the difference? I don't think that would be appropriate.
I'll do it.
No, I think it's not appropriate.
What is the difference between the amount of subscribers and the, that the voice has than the Times Herald?
Pretty gigantic. I mean, the, the Times Herald covers the whole Bluewater area.
But I'm asking you, you know the difference.
Not in the mirror, play off of my hand, but I mean, you really don't need to, I mean, that's really a common sense.
Do you know that they put, the voice also puts the bids into that magazine?
The traders.
What's it called?
The, it's the traders.
The traders part.
The people in the certain trades receive that free, it's like what you get at the corner store where you go in and if you look for a job or if you're looking for certain services, it's like the apartment finder type of thing.
I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of 50/50 on it.
Well, I, I, like I said, I'll pay for it.
Michael, it has nothing to do with you paying for it. I'm actually 50/50 on it because I agree in one aspect. Things, the security camera did not have to go out for bid. Called around, did what I, I was elected to do what's in the best interest of the township. I did my best. I don't appreciate you saying inside dealing and corrupt in that when I did my best to do what I could. Okay, so then, put this out for bid, get one bid, but then that's not fair to the one person who took the time to put a presentation and, and to mail it in. That, you know, so then, okay, well, we only, I, I agree with you about getting the three quotes because that's what I was trying to do with the camera people.
Do you know of anyone, Michael, that you want to have a bid put in from?
Well, I asked him that and I asked him to get that before the end of the week when I had the phone conversation with them.
Yes, the, but I mentioned to Kelly it needed to be brought up to rebid. Obviously, you can't tell people. I mean, afterwards, when I attended a meeting of Port Huron and one company did mention something to me, but obviously that can't be done, you know, unless it's out for rebid. But I really think that the, the local companies in the Bluewater area would have a better chance of seeing it in the Times Herald since the voice failed this time.
And how many local companies are there in the Yellow Pages for websites?
No, I didn't...
I don't use the Yellow Pages, so I don't look, I just Google.
Yeah, oh, the Yellow Pages, when you're, Madam Chair, just for future reference, if you want local business, Yellow Pages. It's the way to go.
Thank you.
You know, send Kirk County Yellow Pages. So I mean, if, if...
How many weeks do we have before the next meeting?
You're going to get this website, I'm going to...
Three more?
Well, we've waited this long.
Yeah, I know. We can't wait anymore. Yeah, I know, we can't wait any longer.
Well, three more weeks isn't gonna hurt, you know, to get the bid out and make sure we get the right company. Because this is gonna last us years.
Have you looked at the revised information?
No.
Which revised?
The sealed bid?
No.
That when we said everybody had a week to look at it before a special meeting? So that we could decide if we wanted to go with this or not?
Oh, no, I haven't even seen it. I didn't know that there was a revised information.
This was the bid that we opened at the meeting and we said, everybody come in and grab the information and have a week to look at it before the special.
See, I never received an email like that.
We said it during the meeting.
We said it at the meeting.
Oh, all right.
The date for today was set at the meeting.
That's one of the problems when I get people over here who are allowed to just bash me the whole way through by the chairperson.
There are people who are doing a good fair amount of bashing too. Loud, loud, everybody was.
Your sister is ridiculous.
Everybody is.
She, it's about sticking up for.
But every, the whole point was everybody was ridiculous. So it was set at the meeting that to come in and look at this. So.
I make a motion that we, let's see. I make a motion that we rebid the lead.
Well, first of all, we need to see if we approve the website bid before he makes a motion to rebid it, right?
Well, whoever makes the first motion makes the first motion, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, well, all right, I'm just trying to, may I borrow your pen, please? Because I want to get the words right. And I'll try to hurry, Lori, I know you're gonna rush down.
Well, I just have a husband who's being honored and I need to go be there. It's not me honoring him.
I ask you, but I don't know if you want to broadcast or if you're doing that.
He's honored differently.
How's this? I make a motion to rebid for a township website with ads placed in the Times Herald for open bidding with a minimum of three bids required to accept.
Did we say how much this was at the last, during the meeting? How much we opened it?
I don't think so.
Because I was just gonna say we did, that's not shared though. And I did consider rebidding the security, but that was brought on tape and it was published. You put it on your website, on your YouTube, and I don't think that's fair for them. Everybody else knows what, the whole presentation and then they can go and bid it if somebody else were to see it. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Are you talking about the lawn or the website?
The camera one. Anyway, let's do it. I can't get enough track.
Well, the camera one's a done deal. We've already voted on it. You're not gonna go back and undo the voting. So if you repeat that all the time, that's why I have. I got rebid for township website with ads in Times Herald and that's when I lost track.
Yep, with ads placed in Times Herald for open bidding with a minimum of three bids required.
Okay, here's a question for you.
Sure.
With the minimum of three bids required, that doesn't need to go in the ad, but for our, so what? If we get two, we aren't gonna open them?
Well, we might want to extend the time in that scenario. Just, or even open them, for example, if the Times Herald. You know what, maybe it would even be a good idea to add on to that motion and place a call to all local Yellow Pages. I'll give all of them a call. Every local company advertised in the Sycamore County Yellow Pages.
And ask them to put a bid in?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, my question is if we do that for one bid, are we gonna do that for all the bids? Because somebody could come on and say, well, you guys called up every single Yellow Page for the website, but how come you didn't call the lawn cares? Or how come you didn't call?
Yeah, I think that's not a good idea because that's, that's.
That's just my concern. They can say that we're not putting it out there evenly for each, about the pest control or the porta potties.
Or the people who didn't even put an ad in the Yellow Pages.
I think. If we go out for bid, they're supposed to go to us. We're not supposed to go to them. That was, that's the difference between, and this is a work in progress. That was the first thing that I did as a bid, I knew. I called around to see what I could do. Okay, now we're putting the things out for bids. That's the whole purpose of a bid is my impression is that they come to you.
Part of the responsibility and the character that we glean from people is whether or not they took the time to put in the bid. And if you're gonna go say, okay, well, you know, we got this open, how about you bid on it? And then now you're taking it out of their hands and you're just throwing the plate at them.
Right, and I agree. In a normal bid situation, that's not what we should do. This is a little bit tougher situation because the first bid process has failed, so it's kind of a second attempt. That's why I'm saying it's a rebid. That's why that word rebid was used in the motion. So that's why I'm saying a little tougher. And obviously, we are the ones who have to place and calls. We're the ones with the need for something.
But that's what I did. And then I got chastised for it. And so then we put this out for bid, but now that's not okay. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think the gripe that people had was that there's 24 local companies and you ended up with a company from East Point.
Well, it was what it was. I called three local companies, they didn't come back.
I didn't hear anybody say anything about East Point.
That was in the newspaper, actually.
It doesn't matter where the person's from, they're.
Well, it's also, the newspapers also said that this was a six-man board.
Yeah, they also said that I think the planning commission for helping with the Easter egg hunt, and that's not what I said. I said, thank you for helping with the cemetery equipment. So, you know, that article was somewhat off on some things and right on others.
They did get it right though, it was in another county.
The whole thing is, if we're gonna, like, okay, so like you said, so here's our first one, we're putting it out. Well, we can't sit there, that defeats the purpose of putting the bid out, is to call companies after we get the closed bid. I agree to have more than one proposal. But it's not fair if that one person didn't, we put it out there and if one person responded, that's not.
The, I mean, there's no question that this needs to be rebid. We didn't get it. I mean, for all we know, there's just no point to measure where one is as opposed to another.
But then my other question is, if we put it out to the Voice, now is this what we're gonna do from now on? Is if we put a bid out to the Voice and then if we only get one response, then we spend more money and put it out to the Times Herald? That's.
And then the inside don't like that, so you have to do it again.
We had a week to look at this and you didn't even come and look at it. So we have 20 bids come in, we're not, no reason to look at those either.
Right.
That's.
You know what I mean?
During, during.
It's a lot of work. I've been researching. I've been going on their websites and looking at to see who, how many websites they've done with Kelly's, with townships. It's a lot of work.
During the bid process. During the bid process, it's much easier. The first initial bid process. I mean, look, it succeeded with the lawn service in the Voice. We have local companies that have got.
Who's gonna do the research on all this?
I think that if we.
I've been doing it.
I've been, I've looked at it too. I know you looked at it.
Yeah, for all I know, I, you know, it's like.
Yeah, great to you. But I think that that's what we did for the website. I think that's what we did for the lawn care, you know.
The, but I mean, there really isn't need to get more companies and this, I mean.
Yeah, but Michael, you didn't even look at this one. That's what I'm saying.
Still, only one, there's no measuring stick.
But it's the whole point that we had it for a week and you didn't even come in to look at it.
I didn't know it was available.
It was, but we said it at the meeting.
That's what I'm saying, but I, look, I'm getting harassed. It's been that since the first meeting.
I was getting harassed. You said it during the meeting when it was stated. How do we know we are, how do we know you're not being attentive, so we tell you again?
Simple.
We don't know.
I have.
It was said at the meeting.
Michael, you watched the video. You put it on YouTube. It's right there on the video.
I don't watch those entire meetings.
Well, it was there at the meeting. That's my, that's my, the whole thing. How do I know?
Are we gonna, if anybody wants to second this motion?
That's why you don't want them.
I can guarantee you, I'm just gonna make this clear. Look, I, one of the, I spent almost six months going to 550 homes, over 550. And I'll tell you, no doubt about it, you know, the things that the people hated most about that previous board was the way that they would do the bids and things like that.
Only 10 people came to the meetings. How did 500 people know anything about the meetings?
Those people knew. They had ways.
Well, that's just, we have to move on, sorry. Okay, so what was your motion?
Rebid for township website with ads in Times Herald for open bidding with a minimum of three bids be received.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sure. Rebid for township website with ads placed in the Times Herald for open bidding with minimum of three bids to be received.
And just to make it clear, that doesn't have to be the case for every situation. That, just.
Right, this is just your motion for now. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you and I can just go forever, so we gotta stick to.
I mean, a website is incredibly.
Okay, so does anybody second the motion? Okay, then the motion fails.
All right, I'd like to paraphrase the motion and say.
So now.
I make a motion to rebid for a township website. Period.
Anybody second? Motion fails. Okay, now to approve the website bid, need a motion to approve the website bid that we received.
Now, one thing I'm gonna make clear, and I'm just gonna say this on behalf of all the voters.
Michael, we're not, you don't, it's not even.
This is kinda grandstanding. This is, well, you're just filibustering right now.
And it's not even discussed yet for the motion. We're usually see if a motion is, I asked, I requested a motion for, to approve the website bid. Is there a motion to approve revising the website bid? The only one that we received.
Well, because we looked at other quotes and it's comparable. If we had to look at other quotes, I would.
What, where are these other quotes?
Michael, you're interrupting.
Here's another quote from other company. That was the meeting we had Monday.
I'm gonna make a motion to study.
It's not your turn to make a motion. You're clearly interrupting Sandy. You didn't even let her finish making her motion. It's not discussion after she made her motion.
This, this.
But you're still interrupting. She needs to finish making her motion with Michael.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I was handed information relating to the motion.
But you're totally still interrupting her. You haven't even let her speak. Let her finish her sentence for her motion. And then it's discussion. You haven't even let her finish her sentence is what I'm saying.
This is all stuff that we've had here all week.
It's, you still, just finish your motion first.
I made a motion to go with revise. After doing research and looking on the internet and with other people, I think they're fair price.
That's your motion? Okay, wait, Michael. We're gonna try to do this right. I'm gonna see if I got this down. Okay, there was your motion. Can you repeat it?
To go with revise.
To go with revise.
Okay. Now, Michael, discussion.
All right.
And her motion.
First, well, I'd like to, some time to study this. That's why I make a motion for a ten minute.
To study what?
The document. I just want to look it over. So I make a motion to, to read.
Well, but you want to just take a second and look at it? I don't think you need a motion to read it, does he?
See, that's the beauty of using Robert's Rules of Order. There's actually something you can use.
Okay, call FTA and ask them how many townships in Michigan use Robert's Rules of Order solely? And they will tell you absolutely no one.
Not using it at all.
You're wasting time by just reading instead of arguing. It's a catch 22, we discussed it, you know.
It could be. We, I checked into that, Sandy.
What?
Doing the security.
No, I didn't say that. That's what I said.
You mean, we sat and discussed, it is a catch 22.
Well.
We put it, we put it out for bid and we only got one bid, so there's.
If I hadn't researched on that company.
Right.
You know, we have a ballpark for the process. And they do all these revised, they specialize in townships.
Right, 12 years they've been doing, they have a ton of townships that they do. And then the same goes, so if you don't like the response and you put it out for bid, what, you gotta keep doing that?
You'd almost certainly get divorced.
And first of all, according to our bidding policy, we didn't even have to go for bid.
Really?
No, because it's under 20,000, but we just tried to do the right thing. You know, people weren't happy, we called around, now people aren't gonna be happy because only one came in, we're trying to do.
Well, we're never gonna please everyone.
Right. Trying to do the best we can.
Get used to that one.
This price of $5,000 is not a good, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
It's not what?
It's not a good price. The.
Which one is that?
That's just the one that came in.
The one that came in on Monday.
I mean, I think that's just, that isn't good. The, it would be helpful to our budget, to our taxpayers' money and to the people if we had more bids. I mean, that's just the way life goes.
But in reality, if they aren't going to send us a bid, then we can't consider their bid.
And that's why I'm saying there's rebids that exist. I mean, that is a common procedure. If you don't get the bid in a satisfactory way, if you don't get, usually the golden rule is three. You rebid. It's a simple process. I mean, this is a huge, I mean, $5,000 is what they're talking about and that's the supposed measuring stick, considered fair. And I tell you.
Well, how about this? I think Sandy and I agree with you and it's fifty-fifty.
I see what you're saying. I totally see what you're saying.
I do too.
But I just wish, I mean.
I think maybe, how about if we do put it out for rebid?
I'll pay for it.
No, Michael, you need to.
No, I'm not kidding.
No, you need, you really need to quit doing that because it's totally inappropriate.
Because then it's like saying that, okay, well, because you're gonna pay for it, that's gonna change my mind. And that's not going to. I'm just trying to see, like I said, it's fifty-fifty. If we put it out for rebid and put it out in the Times Herald, then we need to work on a policy, if you want to, if you want to work on a policy. So that we have a way that we're gonna do the bids. And we have to do them all the same way and we have to do them fairly. That's part of why I, I agree with your three bid rule, but when you don't get them, you know, Kim, this is now two different, two different ways we did bids and that, well, we did three different bids. And the outcome on one that we put out there, one that we made phone calls was that we only had one response. Then another one we put out there, we had three responses, so I don't know. I think we did the.
Well, I mean, I'll put it to you, I think another, usually by looking at things at extremes, you can get a good example.
Well, if you put this video on your YouTube right now, though, if we're gonna go out for bid, you already said $5,000 is too much. And there's only one person in the audience. I mean, you see what I'm saying if you do.
So then we put stuff out for bids, oh, yeah, that's true.
It's already out there.
I mean, just to look at things from an extreme point of view.
And then what, then at what amount do we put things out for bid?
What's that?
At what amount, what level do we put things out for bid? Most people say.
Make it in the policy.
Most people, most townships, because I agree that the policy of 20,000 is too much. But most townships who have anything over $5,000, they put out for bid.
Well, I actually checked into that with a couple of local people, you know, everyone agrees.
Let's get back to the, either we do a rebid or we approve revise or we deny revise. I mean, let's get the meeting moving in the right direction.
Okay, so what was your, I'm sorry, can you re? I agree. We've been discussing it. I agree. We've been discussing it for a long time.
So are we waiting for a second on Sandy's or are we revisiting Michael's opinion?
What was Sandy's?
Sandy's was to go with revised.
I was seconded.
You're seconding Sandy?
Because, yep, the grand total is $4,200, which is the first year only. It's under $5,000. They are the only ones that sent the bid in, until we come up with, we need to come up with a bidding policy. Because we're not going to please everybody, but these, they were the only person that sent it in and we did put it out there for bid. And why should, I mean, it's just.
Madam Chair, I'd like to mention something to the, to the clerk, Lori Russellburg. We, you know, considering Sandra made the motion, we can presume it's logical to conclude she will be in favor. Similar with Kelly, who seconded. However, it does take a majority to pass and you and I do have the ability to pass it. I, I did watch, someone pointed out in a video to me.
You can make the judge finish his reading here.
Okay, I'm just saying, we have the ability to stop.
Why would you say that to her?
Well, you're getting mad at Kenny for her.
Well, I find that very, very inappropriate for you to now try to ferret out what the voting is going to be. Either I vote the way I vote or I don't.
All right.
You have absolutely no say in how I vote. Now you're trying to sway the way I'm going to vote.
I'm just reminding you.
That's a meeting. You got Madam Chair here for accusing him of doing that.
Now that's corrupt.
No, no, a fifty-fifty. I simply remind you, we, that a majority is not.
A done, we're done. You keep saying the same thing over and over again. You don't listen. What you are saying right now is totally inappropriate. You wait until we are done voting before you do that. We have a second.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
I correct? Oppose?
Nay.
Do you want to do a public comment, Mrs. Zorn?
I'll do a public comment. The, I'm very, very disappointed with this Cochranville Township Board. In my opinion, we have a group of good old boys again. You know, we just saw one bid placed and it was won. There was an opportunity for a rebid and the board turned it down. You know, in January of 2012, my time was cut short by Mary Agnes Simons, the former deputy clerk and the former supervisor, Tom Raymond, at 2 minutes, 7 seconds. At the violation of the Michigan Public Open Meetings Act. Ever since then, I wore a stopwatch and until I forgot it, in June of 2012, I was allowed to speak. In June, I forgot it and my time was cut short at under 2 minutes. Two meetings in a row, in this, and, and, you know, my, my time was, I, I was told motion and motion to adjourn and second. Very immoral. But this time, I was cut short at 2 minutes, 16 seconds, another violation. In fact, we never even reached public, or, or board comments, which is what Supervisor Kelly Lisco told me to be waiting for the whole time. So, I mean, the actions speak far louder than words or smiles. I, I simply ask people in Cochranville Township not to be pulled in. I want to make it clear that I supported Kelly Facelli-Lisco, or excuse me, Kelly Lisco and Lori Russellburg based on the fact that they said, for example, they would not be supporting Attorney John McNamie, the one who took Tom Raymond's side all the time. And, and when I heard that Kelly Lisco and Lori Russellburg were now going to enjoy working with John McNamie, that was very disturbing to me.
You have 3 minutes, huh? No, he's got 1 minute, 7 seconds.
And that was very disturbing because, well, Madam Supervisor, I'm supposed to be, you know, receiving your attention. The, most people, when I talk with, particularly with Lori Russellburg, are surprised that she now takes the side of John McNamie instead of fighting against him. Particularly those people that stood with Lori during the time when she was friends with Mr. Fred Dillas, a man who I respect very much.
I am still friends with Mr. Fred Dillas.
Unfortunately, I bet he doesn't take the side of John McNamie. Or actually, I think that's a good thing. The, because he hasn't taken a case to court for Cochranville since 2010. I can safely tell you on behalf of the people who attended, the overwhelming majority of people who attended mine and Kelly's fundraiser, I still have their support. Kelly doesn't. And that's the way it is. I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any, do you miss Sandy?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 1:57.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion fails.
Meeting adjourned.